Resolutions, was it six through nine?
Yes.
Six through nine. Any questions regarding those?
I think I have a question. Does this fall within our budget? We adopted our budget last year.
It would have been in miscellaneous revenue, yes.
So what is the figures?
Not these exact figures, I would estimate it then in our, in our figures. Because at the time we did budget, we did not know what this year's tax rate was going to be.
All right. Third note for other comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve all four of those. We have a motion made by Julie here as second. Second by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item C, the 2022 tax abatements. First up in your packet and on our screen is the one for John Shear. You should have last year's and this year's in here, all right, Connie, or his first year's?
It should be, yes.
Okay, so the first two. I'll give you all a moment to review them. Connie, any comments regarding these?
We just have these two that have applied this year and, you know, under the state law, they have to file them by May 15th, which they did. And they, they are comparing what they originally had said they were going to do and what they have actually done. Now, on River Point, I do want to point out that that is just on the retail business, the Bliss Ice Cream place is what that is on. There is nothing allowed on any of the apartments or anything. That's all their abatement as far as for any retail business.
I think we should vote on these separately, don't you think, Connie?
Yes.
Okay. First up, we'll talk about Mr. Shear's. He has a financial institution there in the 400 block on Main Street. He built a new facility there. You can see his actual on his SB one and his estimated, excuse me, SB one is actual in the next column there. It does, in my eyes, show that his current employees stay, you know, stay the same, but it actually does show salaries are about 20,000, 21,000 more than, yeah, so.
And this, of the 10 years he is on AB, the next year will be his AB. So he's gradually, he will be off in two years.
Right. So they only get 8%. It's, it works its way up. So if there's no questions on John's, I'll entertain a motion to approve his.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion made by Philip here as second. Seconded by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And next up is River Point.
I think, it sounds like River Point wanted to have more employees in there. Like, they've built a space, they've invested money. It's just, nothing's come through. It's not their fault. It's not really their fault.
This is the same thing that happened in High Street. They projected 47 employees and they've got zero.
Correct. When they originally had done this, they had, when that original was done, getting back in 2016, that was when they were also asking for the different floors on the apartments also. Now, and I wasn't here at the time, so I don't, I don't know where they got the 40, how they even got the 47 employees at that time, when, when the city council allowed it.
They were counting residents.
But now they're, yeah.
Well, 47 employees, but salaries are 37.
Has the president or organization changed, or is that the same? Or?
No. No, looks like somebody else.
Is someone different that, see, because their original one was signed in 2016, and it seems like each year we're dealing with someone new within that company that is filling this out. Because I know there was someone new this year that I worked with.
The person signed us president, right?
Uh, well, yeah. Well, authorized representative. Authorized representative.
Flared. That's a flared in comments.
And it does say president. I will agree with you on that. I do see that now. So I assume that the president of their, of River Point has changed. I, I don't know.
If I recall, the unit sent us, we took one of the reactions that were substantially in compliance.
Correct.
Compliant.
Are, you can, you can allow the request, you can deny the request, or you can reduce the tax abate amount. They are currently getting... I've got too many papers.
This, I understand in this payment, if we don't refer the money, we go to the TIP. Not like it's a big deal, but. Or maybe they increase the assessed value a little bit.
This is, or is this in one of the new TIP areas? What, what we're talking about, last year Bliss's assessment was 28,500 dollars. Was their assessment of their area. And so, being in, this is their, only their fourth year, so they're down to only, we would only give them about 70%, 60% of that assessed value is what I've cut off.
And then that's only on the finished retail where?
That's only finished retail.
Where Bliss is.
Yes.
Only that particular spot.
Julie, they didn't do it the first couple of years because it was not completed, but their abatement had started.
Okay. Sketching start.
I never understood their number. I don't understand the amount that they were told here.
Yes, this is actually only 28. They're, they're, for 2000, they're paid 2022. On, if the assessment states at 28,500, they will get 70% of that. And that had to do with the ordinance that was signed stating that it would start in 18, pay 19, but there wasn't anything there. So they did not get anything the first two years of their, their abatement time.
So counsel, what, what are you wanting to do on River Point? Do you want to approve it, deny it, or take it under, what was the third consideration? We have a motion for approval made by Larry here as second.
I'll second it.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion? Yep.
Why is assessed value different than what? Is that all different than the amount that you're telling us that's on the paper?
She's midways down there. You're looking at assessed value.
I looked at what they were assess, assess lashes, what's that, just that part was assessed.
So not the whole, so.
I figured what they're doing here is giving you what they think the whole bottom area is assessed, that first retail area.
But they're only actually entitled to abatement on the occupied portion.
Finished, occupied, yeah.
Yes, finished.
I don't, I don't understand the numbers either, Julie.
So, we, we have, do we do have a motion, of course, to wrap the discussion point? We have a motion as made by Larry and seconded by Gary. Any further discussion still before we call for a vote? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. That's all the abatements, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And this is the electronic meeting, meeting policy. Jeff, you get to read another one of these.
Just caught my breath.
This is rather lengthy and, counsel, just a little.
I wish the whole council had been here for the Board of Public Works, because then I could just substitute the words, council, for what I said, Board of Public Works. This is the resolution to, to adopt a policy in conjunction with the statutory changes that were made to allow participation, in essence, to allow virtual participation in, in public meetings, for a public meeting to be legitimate, at least half have to be there in person. But as you'll, as you'll hear through this process, there will still be the option to participate on a limited basis by electronic means. And so if the council wants me to read this resolution, I will do so.
Counsel, go ahead and read the resolution.
Thank you. City of Tel City, Indiana, Tel City Common Council, Resolution Number 2021-10. Resolution establishing the policy by which members of the common council may participate by electronic means of communication. Whereas Public Law 88-2021, House Enrolled Act 1437, Section 5, amended Indiana Code Section 5-14-1.5-1, et sec, the act, effective April 20th, '21, by amending Indiana Code Section 5-14-1.5-3.5, to prescribe new requirements by which members of the governing body of a public agency of a political subdivision may participate in a meeting by any electronic means of communication. Excuse me. Whereas a member of the governing body may participate by any means of communication that allows all participating members of the governing body to simultaneously communicate with each other, and, except for a meeting that is an executive session, allows the public to simultaneously attend and observe the meeting. Whereas the act requires the governing body to adopt a written policy establishing the procedures that apply to a member's participation in a meeting by an electronic means of communication, and may, may adopt procedures that are more restrictive than the procedures established by Indiana Code Section 5-14-1.5-3.5D. And whereas the common council, council is the governing body of the city of Tel City, Indiana, now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Tel City, Indiana. Section 1, A, the provisions of the act, including definitions, apply to this resolution. B, this resolution shall be known as the electronic meetings policy of the council and applies to the council and any committee appointed directly by the council or its presiding officer. Section 2, A, subject to Sections 3 and 5, any member may participate in a meeting by any electronic means of communication that allows all participating members of the governing body to simultaneously communicate with each other, and other than a meeting that is an executive session, allows the public to simultaneously attend and observe the meeting. B, a member who participates by an electronic means of communication shall be considered present for purposes of establish a quorum, and may participate in final action only if the member can be seen and heard. All votes taken during a meeting at which at least one member participates by an electronic means of communication must be taken by roll call vote. Thank you. Section 3, A, at least 50% of the members must be physically present at a meeting at which a member will participate, will participate by means of electronic communication. Not more than 50% of the members may participate by an electronic means of communication at that same meeting. B, a member may not attend more than 50% of the meetings in a calendar year by an electronic means of communication unless the member's electronic participation is due to military service, illness or other medical condition, death of a relative, or an emergency involving actual or threatened injury to persons or property. C, a member may attend two consecutive meetings, a set of meetings, by electronic communication. A member must attend in person at least one meeting between sets of meetings that the member attends by electronic communication unless the member's absence is due to military service, illness or other medical condition, death of a relative, or an emergency involving actual or threatened injury to persons or property. Section 4, the minutes or memoranda of a meeting at which any member participates by electronic means of communication must. Number 1, identify each member who was A, physically present at the meeting, B, participated in the meeting by electronic, electronic means of communication, and C, was absent. And 2, identify the electronic means of communication by which, A, members participated in the meeting, and B, members of the public attended and observed the meeting if the meeting was not an executive session. Section 5, no member of the council may participate by means of electronic communication in a meeting at which the council may take final action to, number 1, adopt a budget, number 2, make a reduction in personnel, number 3, initiate a referendum, number 4, impose or increase a fee, number 5, impose or increase a penalty, number 6, exercise the council's power of eminent domain, or number 7, establish, impose, raise or renew a tax. Section 6, A, if an emergency is declared by, number 1, the governor under Indiana Code Section 10-14-3-12, or number 2, the mayor under Indiana Code Section 10-14-3-29, members are not required to be physically present for a meeting until the emergency is terminated. B, members may participate in a meeting by any means of communication provided that, number 1, at least a quorum of the members participate in the meeting by means of electronic communication or in person, number 2, the public may simultaneously attend and observe the meeting unless the meeting is an executive session, number 3, the minutes or memoranda of the meeting must comply with Section 4 of this resolution, C, all votes taken during a meeting at which at least one member participates by an electronic means of communication must be taken by roll call vote. Section 7, this resolution shall be effective from and after adoption by this council and compliance with Indiana Code 36-4-6-14, adopted this 7th day of June 2021. Chris Cale, Presiding Officer, Connie Berger, attest.
All right, counsel. You've heard the reading of that resolution in its entirety. Resolutions require only one reading.
Thank God.
If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to see Section 3B be, a member may not attend more than 25% of the meetings.
And Mr. Simpson, I, all I can advise you on this, this was a stock form that was provided to us by the Association of Indiana Municipalities as an example of what they recommend that we adopt. If the council wishes to, it certainly, the council certainly can, would impose a more restrictive, uh, uh, policy. And so if it is the desire of the council to do that, I believe we could do one of two things. We either revisit this issue at a subsequent meeting, or we could try to redact that and correct it by what's called internalization, and then I could submit an updated version of this for the actual signatures.
The only problem with changing that, Philip, all due respect, is the board of works that adopt the exact same thing. If we change, you're gonna have two separate resolutions, and then your water board's gonna have one. It might make it a little confusing when you have your meetings. They all probably be about the same, just to be honest.
Well, they could change it if they wanted it to be the same, of course.
They would have to change theirs, yeah. We'd have to go back and amend that resolution.
I'd have to read it again, but that's okay.
I want to make a motion to adopt the resolution as read.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the resolution as read by Council Member Little.
I'll second.
And we have it seconded by Larry. Any further discussion?
I just think you should be at more than 50% of the meetings, like 75%, but we can go ahead and vote.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Philip, yeah. All right, next up is case law development. They were supposed to be somebody here for them, so, that's why it was added to agenda, so. I don't see anybody here, so we'll move on.
I, I wanted to.
Oh, you wanted on it, that's right. I'm sorry.
There's been some discussion, and again, no, concerning a development that's gonna possibly take place here, east of the junior high building out here, all east of 237 there. Again, I heard possibly as many as 90, uh, new homes could be built in there, maybe to that effect. The thing that concerned me in hearing that was the fact that I assumed or anticipated having access to our water and our sewer out there. And to my knowledge, there's been no annexation, land brought before this council or the board of works. And I think, I think that's, that's a road that we should not be going down for numerous reasons, again. And I was elected to separate the best interests of the people of Tel City, and I don't feel like when we run our services out to these areas, I know they pay a little bit more money for it, but when it comes to infrastructure, if we have to spend $2 or $3 million on our infrastructure, would those people be paying that much? Would they be paying a major sum of it? No, not at all. So I really feel like that I could foresee if we kind of do that, and that's something that most of the cities of Southern Indiana don't do. Bloomville, Jasper, Honeyburg, Washington, Princeton, Vincennes. If you're gonna give city services in those cities, they say, okay, you wanna join our city? Yes, you will be annexed, then we'll talk to you about the services. So, yeah, I don't know if that would come before us at some point or not, but I really feel it's totally unfair to the taxpayers of our city to allow these services, water and sewer to go out here in unincorporated areas, simply because in a five or a 10 or 15 year period, how many dollars of property taxes would they pay to this city? And the answer would be zero. That money would go to Troy Township and Berry County. So.
We would go to school corporations.
What?
We'd go to the school corporations.
Yeah, we'd go to school corporations. It would not add to our assessed value as a city.
That's right.
It would not raise our population as a city. So, I like the, the people's feeling on there.
I totally agree with you, Gary, myself. I would assume any development like this, since they're within the two mile jurisdiction, would come before the planning, which they would have to follow a plan.
They'd be subject to our zoning requirements, so development plans, zoning, they'd be subject to.
To my knowledge, nothing has been submitted as a.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
In order to annex that area, that 40 acres or whatever it is there, what has to happen? Would they have to buy property or own property or annex properties that touch the city? Or how does that work?
I think the, the individual wishing to be annexed would have to get the people between him and the city.
To join.
Boundaries to agree for that too, cap. So he'd have to, or they'd have to sell.
It's, it's confusing. It's a, it's a, the best way to summarize it is if you think of the entire outline of the property as a percentage of a pie, there's, I can't remember what the percentage of is, but a certain percentage of that contiguous boundary has to be contiguous to the city in order to do a voluntary annexation. So what I know of this property out there, they would have to recruit some people that aren't in the development to join in a voluntary annexation.
Are there several properties that they would have to recruit or purchase or?
I'm, I haven't looked at it, but I'd, I'd have to guess just off the top of my head that they'd have to recruit some other folks to join them in a voluntary annexation.
I agree with you, Gary. I mean, I don't know a lot about it, but I, I agree that I, I think that I would, like to see for the city, you know, taxpayers and places and everything, that would, that would be great, you know, for the development.
Yeah, I think we all love the development, but again, to me, it's unfair for the citizens of Tel City to be paying infrastructure for citizens not in the city to get those.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Okay.
Can I talk about that, like, a while back, maybe around the council?
Oh, yeah.
Blood allowing?
Well, the only way we could extend a city service, and I don't, I can't remember if we actually adopted the right ordinance, if we are to extend a city, so it'd be water or sewer, they have to sign an annexation waiver. So, and, and that, that is an option, so if annexation, voluntary or involuntary comes in the road, they can't remonster against it. That's an option.
But that still puts the cost of an annexation on the part of the city.
Correct.
We gotta pay for it.
It would.
Not the individual.
Unless they joined it as a voluntary annexation.
Right.
Correct. So there's, there's options out there. I think it's all for discussion. I think that's going to be a, a sit-down meeting with the developer to find out what their wants and needs are, and what they're willing to do, and so forth, between the planning commission and council members individually, if they want that city service. It's something that, it's definitely important, so.
I'm not sure how many were involved, but I still had that rather foul taste in my mouth a few years ago. We spent a quarter of a million dollars attempting to annex, which was not successful. That, there's just a few people that chose to sign that. If they had taken their name off of that, that annexation wouldn't have went through. So that cost us a quarter million, and we gained nothing from it, really.
As much as I like earning fees for litigation, I am not anxious for you guys to say, hey, let's go annex, so. Just trying, just trying to pay me is not a reason, guys.
Kind of the idea is to talk about it, of course.
I think you should reach out to the developers and talk to them as well. I mean, you guys, I mean, I can, but you guys are the ultimate voting in this, and you need to take it upon yourselves to reach out to the developers and talk to them and find out what their wants and needs and plans are. They may not, they may want to carry on septic and not be honest, I don't know. Do you, that's for the council. No, I don't think there is either, but I think it's a lot. It would be a lot, but I do think, that's where I'm, that's where I think you guys need to reach out to them, so. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion on the development?
No, thanks.
All right. We're gonna move on for the sake of time and to item F, this is the dispatch interlocal committee. Counsel, as you're aware, at our last joint meeting with, we had the county council, we've got President, the county council, Luke Thomas here. Thank you for joining us. I did attend our last meeting where he appointed himself as president and vice president, David H. to serve on this committee, so they will be representing the county side. On the city side, I'm gonna have myself as mayor, Connie Berger as our clerk treasurer, two council members, Larry Kleeman and Gary Morton on there. And then Cannleton, I'm gonna ask if their mayor and one of their council members that they pick to be on there, either the council can pick it or Mayor Terry can, their call. Troy, ask their clerk treasurer, which is Linda Crawford, and one of their council members as well. So, as far as anybody else from the county or city, like the chief or Steve Howells or any of those, they will be invited to the meeting if we need them at the meetings. This is a financial discussion when it comes to budgeting, and this is the council that does the budgeting. And that's the county council that does the budgeting, that's why you have Cannleton and Troy. Yes, Mr. Thomas, come on up. So, we would invite them as needed, but this is something we want to get done quickly. Luke.
Hello, everyone. Luke Thomas, county council president and now Tel City city resident as well.
Thank you.
It's my first time addressing the city council as a resident. I would just like to say that I think the city has been very professional in going about how this all came up. And I know there has been side meetings with county officials that I have not been a part of regarding this. I was appointed and David H. were appointed to represent the county on this with the commissioners, agreed to that. So any side meetings that have been going on, I have not personally been a part of, so I don't know what's being discussed, but I am ready and willing to work with the city council on this because I do believe a solution can easily be figured out. So I'm ready and willing to work with you, and I think we will find a solution. But, so any, any of the dramatics that are happening out there, I have nothing to do with, I'm ready to find a solution, so. That's really all I have to say.
Well, Luke, thank you for your comments. You're, you're exactly right. And I, we as a council, and I'll, I'll speak to the council, because I'm sure you'll feel this way, we appreciate your professionalism and your willingness to work with us and not take part in, you know, the other things that's, the sidebar thing that's been going on, that's really turned this into almost a toxic situation in some ways, that's really starting to create a mess that shouldn't be created in the first place. All we're asking for, and I think the county would, would agree, and that's why you're at Oregon, is a fair shake at the end of the day. Plain and simple. And the, the unnecessary comments that have been made and, and things, the drama that's been brought into it, the politics that's been brought into it even, is unnecessary and warranted. We're trying to come up with a fair shake that works for all of us, and unfortunately, that side of it's starting to take some, some hold and a little speed out on, out in the street that I'm hearing as well. And we're gonna nip that and move forward, work with the county, and, and get this done right away, because the sooner, the better. We don't want this to drag on for months, and it's gonna cause more problems, and I appreciate it than you and the county councils do.
At the end of the day, it's, if I, it's, comes down to numbers, it's really that simple. So that's all I'm gonna make this about, is this numbers.
Exactly. And that's all it should be about.
You and David.
David, yeah, David H. and I will be working with you.
Like arguing over math versus arguing over art.
Yeah.
You'll never win, you'll never win an argument over art, but math problems have one answer.
Exactly.
Do you have dates?
We do not have a date, so I just announced that I'm gonna get with Mr. Thomas this week and probably set a meeting up hopefully for next week sometime.
Yep.
In the evening or on a Friday, when it works with your schedule a little bit better. So, we will be getting together rather soon, because we have to get it done soon for a budget, and so do that.
Yep.
And the longer we drag it out, it's gonna make budgets drag out.
Yep, and.
And cause more problems.
I think there's some changes that need to take place between a certain timeframe, so the sooner, the better, so.
I'll, I'll be ready when you need a document drafted.
All right. Well, thank you.
Did you say one person from Cannleton?
Yeah, one from Cannleton, one from Troy, uh-huh. Next up is the American Rescue Committee. As you know, the city will be receiving around 1.5 million in, in those funds. The committee that I've established, partial, it's not complete, but it will be, to serve on that is a seven member, myself as mayor, Connie Berger as clerk treasurer, Philip Simpson as council member, John Little as council member at large. I did reach out to the county. I, I think it's important to have some county representation on this. So I did reach out to Mr. Thomas, the council president of the council, and he recommended Danny Boland serve on that committee as a county representation, because he actually does live in the city limits. So he, he really fit that mold well. Lastly on there, and this is probably the most important part in my opinion, is we are requesting two citizens to serve on our American Rescue Fund. Two citizens that have to live in the corporate city limits of the city of Tel City. So if they live just right outside, it ain't gonna work. This is the Tel City Fund, so they need to be in it. I am requesting that they, these, a letter of interest, either in writing, not on Facebook, in writing, be submitted either through email, or you can, through the mayor's office, or in writing, be submitted either through email, or you can, through the mayor's office, or drop off a letter in the mayor's office, and I will make that announcement of those two at our July meeting, first council meeting. So roughly a little under thirty days, so July thirtieth is your deadline on that. Again, it must be in writing by letter submitted.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, sorry. It can't be just like, oh, I want to be on it on Facebook, that, I'm not going to look on Facebook, see who wants to and what doesn't want to be, we're doing this formally. Well, it will happen that way. You know what, everybody's laughing.
Personal messages.
Yeah, or personal message, I know, that ain't going to work. It's got to be in writing. This is a very serious matter, this is a lot of money, and it needs to be done right with structure and organization, so.
Two questions.
Yes.
One is, will meetings be open to the public?
Yes.
So council members, even if they're not on the committee, are able to attend the meeting?
Yes, and they will be recording and posting on our YouTube as well for those who can't attend.
And what is the end result of this committee?
The end result is the committee to spend these funds, make a recommendation. At the end of the day, the executive, myself, signs off on all of it, but I don't want, I don't think it's right that one person have all that power to spend this kind of money without any accountability and suggestion.
They'll make a recommendation to the council, and then the council's on it.
No.
I'm sorry.
The council does not approve the plan?
I thought the council approved the final expenditure of the funds.
The council will have to approve an additional appropriation.
Additional appropriations, yes.
Yes.
So they make a recommendation, the council in the end approves the appropriation, yeah. I was getting scared there.
But the money must be spent.
Okay, we get half of it this year, another half next year, three years total, but you have to have the whole half, first half spent by next year? No?
You have to have it all spent by twenty twenty twenty.
There you go.
And twenty twenty twenty.
We get, we haven't received our first draw yet. The county received theirs, we have not received ours.
And, and, oh, what am I going to still say?
Come on up, Mr. Thomas, he's going to put a regis first.
Many of the I've been in, they're really cautioning to take your time and decide what you're going to spend your money for. There's only limited things you can spend it for, and they really want you to look at everything that's, that you can do to help assist.
Mr. Thomas.
I would agree with clerk treasurer, Connie Berger on that. Also, you have to have the expenses incurred by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. You have until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six to actually spend the funds, so they have to be incurred and then spent by the end of twenty twenty-six, so.
Twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-six. They have to be incurred by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, then you have two years to get everything done. So if you're doing like a construction project, you'd have those two years to get everything wrapped up.
Yeah.
So, and I know the National Association of Counties has a really good analysis on their website, they do a lot of videos on it, I know you use your city, yeah, but.
AIM has the same, AIM has the same thing, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, so, and Indiana fifteen would probably be happy to work with you on this.
Okay.
It is toast.
Thank you. Any other comments on the committee? All right. Next up, item H, merchant ordinance or door-to-door sales, whatever you would call it. You've got several things in your packet here, this is just for information and discussion tonight. This was brought about, we had a door-to-door sales in the community a couple weeks ago, caused quite a stir, so I looked, I had Connie pull the ordinance on it, and they did follow the ordinance, they weren't breaking any laws, but it also shows that why we need, the way things are done, the way things are done needs to be changed every now and then, this is part of it. This was adopted, it's almost as old as I am, so, it was adopted in eighty-four, so yeah, it's thirty-seven years old, I think it's about time we review it, update it, because times have changed in door-to-door sales from nineteen eighty-four to today. That was considerably, so.
I have a question regarding this one, whatever you're about.
Okay, but you will see a draft, I did reach out to our city attorney, this is Bloomington, is that right, the one from Bloomington?
Yep.
There's this a little lengthier, but it is a nice read, I think it's something that we could model ours after.
As the person who would be reading this, I am not suggesting we adopt this one, because I.
Oh, no, but it's got to be done by, I'll read it if I have to.
But it's got, it's got some language in there that's much more updated.
It is, and I, and I'm okay reading it myself if you don't want to, but I want us to have good, strong ordinances that protect our citizens when our door-to-door salesmen, such as, you know, an ID badge, you know, certain hours that they can knock on the doors and so forth, you know? We don't invite knocking or wanting to sell something at, you know, eleven o'clock at night, not that that happened, but it can. So I planned by our next council meeting to work with the council and our city attorney to have an ordinance that we could present at our July meeting for consideration. So Larry?
Okay, I printed this chapter one twelve of our ordinance, I printed it off our website, it's called peddlers, solicitors, and current merchants, something like that, and when I read transient merchant, I believe this should apply to food trucks that come into the county. Are we currently collecting fees and licensing these food trucks that are coming into the county?
The county does.
I, I'm asking just the city ordinance.
The city does not.
Does not.
So these food trucks that come and park at Riverside or Moskus or wherever they go out on the street or whatever, the way I read this, they should be getting a license, and we should be collecting fees. And what it said, I mean, if you read, I'll read it real quick, but I can't read it as fast as Jeff. Transient merchant, any person or persons who engage in vending or selling of merchandise at any place within the carver limits of the city temporarily, and who do not intend to become and do not become a current merchant within the carver limits of the city, except that transient merchant shall not be any group of persons or merchants who engage in vending or selling of fresh produce at or near city hall or other designated locations in the city after approval by the board of public boards, during the months of June, July, and August of each year. My reading of that is these food trucks are transient persons, and if they're going to be in the city based on the fee schedule, if they're going to be for a period not exceeding one week, they should be paying clerk treasurer a hundred bucks. If they're going to be in the city providing services not exceeding one month, they should be paying clerk treasurer two fifty. If they're going to be in the city for up to a year, they should be paying five hundred bucks. I believe that this applies to food trucks.
And Larry, that's something, you bring up a good point, that in our new one that we hope to draft, it can include that in it, for, in clarification.
I think it does now, I mean.
But the only, the one word, and I don't have it in front of me, Larry, I did read it in, in looking at this issue, and the word merchandise, I'd have to look at what merchandise. If, if, they specifically exempted out produce, I don't know if there's somewhere where the word merchandise is, is defined somewhere else in the code that would exempt out food.
And it's all about where it's defined in the code.
And it's, yeah, it's going to be where, where the word merchandise is defined, defined as it relates to that, but absent, absent a definition in there, then merchandise will be what the dictionary tells us merchandise is, so I'm not saying I disagree with you, I'm just saying that, that the word that I clued in on when you read that was the word merchandise.
Now, do other cities, do other cities collect fees from these food trucks that don't necessarily pay property taxes?
Well.
I mean, I don't want to be.
Saying that, in eighty-four, the word food truck probably didn't exist.
Probably not, yeah.
I mean, food trucks were around already five years ago. None. This is a fairly new thing, I think, food trucks.
It's a new trend in our area, yeah, so, but again, and I agree, Larry, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying this is a time to revise this whole ordinance and clarify that if you think it is, that's great, if not, so it's okay, but the new ordinance does need to be updated, and that can include food trucks in it, and address all that in one lump sum.
We can define merchandise.
Yeah, I have no problem, but it just, I mean, we've got businesses that all sell these same products that are residents of the city and pay property taxes.
Then we'll have to clarify, too, if a food truck's on private property or on public property. Where's that, I mean, I don't know, that's.
But if they're operating, operating a business whether it's public or private, that's, we're still subject to city ordinance.
Yeah, the only difference if they're on public property, it's a space in there that's more of a per se food lab.
Right, all right.
That's a good point, I hadn't even considered the food trucks when we were looking at this issue.
And I didn't either, so.
The issue that came up a couple weeks ago with the dish people.
Okay.
And I did receive a request last week from another company that is wanting to come in and do some selling, and I asked them to please, I would not issue them a license until we updated our ordinance.
All right.
I told them we're in the process of.
I'm going to move on to mayor's report real quick for sake of time, we're not trying to break our record here tonight, okay? Get close. All right, my partners in pride is going to be Julie's Tell Street Cafes, their drive-through. They put a significant amount of investment in what would be a lot of people remember as the old burst, the gas station. It's wonderful, it's going over very well, so they are my partners in pride for June. The city did submit a grant for the DNR for a fifty-fifty match for the sports complex, we won't hear back from that till later in this year. We covered Windy Creek, we did hire several summer employees, so you're going to see quite a few new employees for this summer, it's going to be helping out. And lastly, I do want to mention the board of works, but I want to bring it up again. The executive order that was signed for employees for COVID does expire at the end of this month, and we will not be renewing that. Vaccines are out there enough, so basically what that means is someone would come down with COVID, be quarantined for whatever reason, those benefits that we had were the two weeks for extra, the pay and so forth, now they're going to have to use their sick time, FMLA,